Welcome to the 5:30 PM July 25th, 2023 Presentation City Council Meeting. And let me just say before I get started, it's so exciting to see everybody here for such a positive, rewarding night. And as Vice Mayor and I were saying earlier, we wish there could be more of these. This is awesome. And I'm so proud of all of you who will be receiving tonight. And I'm proud of all the people who came to support. So with that, I figure I'm at now. Please join me in a moment of silence. And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules of speak?
Yes, sir. This is a city council meeting to hear special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take any formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign up card is required. Citizens will be given three minutes to speak. All sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Manager.
Yes, the first order of business is the recognition of the Public Works Street Construction Crew as a group, and Sandy Reller will do the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sandy. Appreciate it.
Thanks for having me. I'm gonna-
Raise that a little bit here. There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
I'm gonna accept that on the crew's behalf. Unfortunately, they start working at six in the morning and 10-hour workdays and 100 or five-degree weather makes for long days. So they were nominated by Connie Rosen HR. I'll read her email since it's real quick. She said, "I just received a call from a citizen." She started out by saying, "I know most people call to complain, but I'm calling to give kudos. Jennifer called to let the city know that she was very impressed with the outstanding job completed by the Street Maintenance Construction Crew on a sidewalk repair last week at the corner of Vanguard and Knox McRae." She said, "They did a fantastic job that looks really nice, and on top of that, they cleared up the area very well. Jennifer actually called in requesting the repair and was impressed with the timeliness of the response as well. She would like the crew and their supervisors to receive her compliments for the work on the project, and she wanted an extra kudo to be given to Michelle Anderson, who stood out as an excellent worker who demonstrated superb leadership skills. Jennifer said she could cut that concrete like it was butter." So, well-deserved kudos to the Streets Maintenance Construction Crew. Am I taking a picture?
Next is the Titusville Police Department's Officer, who is the Officer of the Month and our City Employee for the July 2023. And Chief Lau would like to thank the Fire Department for your great show of support for the Officer of the Month in July.
So it is truly an honor to be able to showcase Officer Darian Crowder as the City's Employee of the Month. Darian started her career in our 911 center, but that just wasn't enough adrenaline surge. So she went ahead and we sent her to the academy, and now she's just absolutely knocking it out of the park in the road. But for this recognition, she is being recognized for two distinct projects. First one was the National Click It or Ticket Campaign. And that's just to highlight and try to get a little bit more safe for her folks and get them so to buckle up. Well, Darian led her squad with the most tickets and the most warnings. It's not just about tickets and enforcement. And then the second campaign was, we have been inundated with multiple complaints about some unruly folks in our parks, and to include violence and drugs and all kinds of things. So Darian, three, four, five times a shift, was visiting the parks. And not only did we start noticing an improvement during the times that Officer Crowder was working, but we got multiple social media entries, as well as people coming up to us on the street thanking us for it. So truly had a, she works great all the time, but specifically during this period, this is why she was nominated for the Employee of the Month.
Next is the Fire Department Medal of Honor Ceremony. Fire Lieutenant David Neld and Driver Operator Billy Wiegert will be presented the Fire Department Medal of Honor for rescuing four individuals and their pets from rising floodwaters during Hurricane Ian. Chief?
Before we get started, I would like to say I'm very privileged to be here right now because of what we get to do. We get to recognize two of our firefighters with what's the highest recognition in our line of work. And it goes without saying that anyone who's earned this award in the past has risked their life to save somebody else's life, and it's rare as well. It's rare to the degree that in our over 100 years of service as a fire department, we've only ever issued the award once. So in 37 years ago, it was issued to a Titusville firefighter who rescued two different people from two different structure fires. One of those victims was a 12-year-old girl who, upon pulling her out of the building, he initiated CPR and continued that all the way to the hospital. So that firefighter was Lieutenant Robert Spillers. Fortunately, Lieutenant Spillers is actually here with us tonight. So Lieutenant, would you mind standing up so we can know of you? I promised them there would be no speeches. So I would also like to ask if you don't mind me facing the audience as we present the award? Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. So can I have David Neld and Billy Wiegert come up? All right. So we would all like to think, especially for those of us who are first responders, that when we're faced with a life or death type situation, we'll still be able to make ethical decisions and do what's right. Unfortunately, most of us don't actually know that because rarely, if ever, are we actually tested in that sort of situation. So Billy Wiegert and Dave Neld were tested, and when they were tested, they chose to risk their life to save other people. And in a few minutes, we're gonna get to hear their award being read to us. But before we do that, it's a more detailed account of what they actually did. But before we do that, I would like to make a couple notes on what they did that day. During Hurricane Ian last year, they were actually off duty, and they were called to go rescue an elderly couple who were victims to rising floodwaters at their new Smyrna Beach home. And they did just that. They went to their home, and they rescued both of them, one at a time, their pets included. And they did all this in a boat that was at best ill-equipped for anything rescued, right? It was a Gnu. And if any of you are familiar with that, it's not designed for rescue. And nor are they really trained in that sort of thing. But the opportunity was there, and they took it. So it didn't end there, though. There was another call. So they went to save that person. They went back out. And then there was a fourth call. And then by the end of the night, they ended up saving five people. They went back into storm conditions that were increasingly getting worse, rising floodwaters, debris in the water, trees falling down, and they were successful. And each one of those individuals, to include their pets, were safe. So as we watch and listen to this video in a minute, I would like you all to reflect on that and try to, and this is what I did, I tried to imagine myself in that situation. So I'd like you all to do the same thing. So join me as we listen to their award being read.
The Fire Chief of the Titusville Fire Department, with authorization of the Awards Committee, takes great pride in presenting the department's Medal of Honor to Lieutenant David A. Neld and Driver Operator William S. Wiegert for service as set forth in the following citation: "For bravery and exceptional courage in the face of grave danger and at the risk of their own lives while conducting rescue operations during Hurricane Ian on 29 September 2022. Lieutenant David Neld and Driver Operator William Wiegert received an urgent call from retired Titusville Fire Department Lieutenant Frank Neld stating he had been contacted by an elderly couple who were trapped and physically unable to escape their new Smyrna Beach home due to rapidly rising waters. Without hesitation and although not trained in swift water rescue, both Lieutenant Neld and Driver Operator Wiegert immediately responded to the call. The only vessel available to them was not designed for such a purpose. Nevertheless, they pushed forward with the rescue attempt. En route, the crew encountered strong tropical storm-force winds and heavy rains, continuously dodged airborne and roadway debris, and contended with unpassable roadways and neighborhoods under several feet of water. The closest access point to reach the trapped victims was nearly a mile away, forcing the crew to navigate through rough, choppy conditions against heavy currents with the constant risk of capsizing. The unnavigable waters and deteriorating weather conditions were exacerbated by the increasing number of debris obstructing the waterway. After more than a half an hour, Lieutenant Neld and Driver Operator Wiegert located the home which had been besieged by several feet of water. The crew quickly ascertained that due to the limitations of their vessel, they would have to make multiple trips through the swift and dangerous waters to bring the two victims to safety. The crew first retrieved the elderly wife and then returned for the 89-year-old husband and the couple's dog. While transporting the second victim, the crew heard cries for help. They immediately discovered a man hailing them from the second floor of an inundated house. However, their vessel was already at capacity and additional occupants would cause it to founder. Upon delivering the elderly man to safety, Lieutenant Neld and Driver Operator Wiegert, without delay and with great urgency, re-entered the waters for a third rescue run, where they ultimately retrieved a man, his wife, and two dogs. By their courageous action and selfless devotion to duty, Lieutenant Neld and Driver Operator Wiegert reflected great credit upon themselves and upheld the highest traditions of the fire service and that of the Titusville Fire Department. Signed, John Hostolz, Fire Chief."
Before they sit down, there's a couple things I want to note. The video mentioned, I believe, four rescues, but since that letter was written, we actually found out it was five. I wish they would have told me, but they're very humble. So there were five people that they rescued. You know, these individuals, through their actions, they epitomize what it means to be a selfless servant as it relates to the fire service at large, as it relates to the Titusville Fire Department specifically. And I do think it's important for me to tell all of you, and if anybody is streaming this right now, that when you're in the city of Titusville and you call 911, the response you get is from people like this. And it honors me that every day I come to work, I get to work alongside them. So please, give them a round of applause.
Unbelievable. This is why I say almost every time I speak, whether it's Fourth of July, or the 911 ceremony, whatever it may be, this is why I say our first responders, our police officers, our firefighters, our EMTs, that's why you're my heroes. That's why you're their heroes. You've got something different in you. When there's danger, I bet you do it at home. I bet you do it. You see a movie, some alarm goes off, and you run to the TV. I mean, it's just in you. You run to danger while the rest of us are trying to get away. And as it was said by Chief, all of us, including myself, always wonder what I would do in that situation. Well, you know what you'd do in that situation. You did it. That's why you're our heroes. And to those who weren't up here today to get the highest award in the world, we know that you have that in you too. And we're very lucky in the city of Titusville to have so many heroes among us. And I could stand here and talk all day, but council's gonna say, "We ain't staying here till 10:00 in the morning." But I am gonna say, "I'm proud to stand in front of you. Gosh, I walked in, I thought, man, this is what it's all about. This is why we do what we do. And this is why we're the great city that we are, because of you. You're our heroes." Thank you again.
Y'all don't have to stay for the whole meeting. So what we'll do is we'll take a five-minute recess and let you congratulate our two members. Yes, sir. The next item is agenda item number four C, which is the Public Works Department Spotlight. This will conclude this year's spotlights, this is the last one that we'll do. We'll pick up the spotlights again back in January after we get into the new budget year. So with that, Kevin and Sandy.
Yep, so we're here representing, this is Sandra Reller, our Operations Director for Public Works, and I'm Kevin Cook, Public Works Director. We're here to present the annual spotlight for your enjoyment on behalf of the 200-plus Public Works employees.
Thank you so very much. And before we even get started, let me just say that I have totally enjoyed and learned so much from the spotlights, to all involved, City Manager, top of the list. The things I hear, I'm like, how do I not know this? I mean, you know, and sometimes you can't know it, but the number of, and I'm sure you're gonna have something like that, some obscene number of phone calls, or pickups, or whatever it may be. So I hope that the citizens, you know, have gotten to see this and realize this, and man, this is very nice. Thank you very much. Sorry to interrupt.
In 2023, the Water Resources Department and the Public Works Department went through a major structural change as the two departments merged into one combined Public Works Department. The Public Works Department, led by Public Works Director Kevin Cook, now consists of 219 employees and 14 divisions. The total budget for the Public Works Department is $96,231,504. The Public Works Department comprises three branches that report to the Public Works Director: the Engineering Branch, the Utility Branch, and the Operations Branch. Additionally, there's one Senior Administrative Assistant under the Public Works Director, who is responsible for upper-level administrative duties and receiving and distributing calls, helping citizens get to the correct division for their concerns. The combining of these two departments allows for better service to our customers, as we now have the ability to cross-train employees and can more easily diagnose and solve customer issues across our 14 divisions.
The Engineering Branch, led by the City Engineer Ashley Smith, consists of nine full-time employees. The Engineering Branch manages the Public Works capital improvement projects from planning, design, permitting, bidding, and construction activities in partnership with our continued contract consultants. Engineering is currently overseeing 112 projects with a total budget of $53,748,225. The Engineering Branch capital improvement projects cover infrastructure needs related to water production, water reclamation, piping infrastructure, storm sewer, road replacement, and any other infrastructure needs related to Public Works. Engineering also reviews site plans and other permits with respect to Public Works functions. The Engineering Branch maintains maps of city infrastructure and holds historical records. The Engineering Branch includes CAD drafters, engineers, an asset manager, a program manager, and a city surveyor.
Water production reports directly to the Public Works Director and consists of 24 employees that manage our drinking water. Our drinking water utility has three wellfields containing a total of 92 wells. Two of the wellfields are in the city of Titusville and draw from a superficial aquifer that is directly recharged by precipitation and surface water in Titusville and parts of Brevard County. The third wellfield draws from a deep aquifer that is recharged from hundreds of miles away. When drawn from the wells, all of our water arrives naturally purified by the biochemical purification processes of soil systems and aquifers. Our water contains a lot of calcium hardness, so we soften and filter all of our well water at the Morning Dove Water Treatment Plant before we pump it into the water mains. We also add fluoride to the water for dental health, and we disinfect the water with chloramine so it stays pure all the way through the system. We distribute the drinking water to our customers with a network of water mains and tanks. There are over 22,400 utility accounts connected to and utilizing our water.
The Utility Branch, led by the Utility Director Andy Janzer, consists of 41 employees and three divisions: water reclamation, electronic services, and laboratory services. Any water that goes down the drain becomes sanitary sewage and is collected by the city's sanitary sewer system. There are over 19,000 utility accounts across the city utilizing the sanitary sewer system. This system includes a vast network of gravity sewers, lift stations, and force mains that deliver the sewage to the Osprey and Blue Heron water reclamation facilities. The water reclamation facilities are giant concrete tanks full of microbes that purify and filter the wastewater using the same natural biochemical processes that occur in natural systems such as wetlands and soil layers. But our facilities supercharge the process mainly by adding a lot of oxygen, so we can treat 6.75 million gallons of water in one day and confirm its purity with laboratory tests as it leaves the reclamation facilities. The Blue Heron facility has a manufactured wetlands treatment process where the treated effluent is further polished with natural treatment systems. Both facilities add chloramine to the final effluent to make sure that the water is sterilized before it is reused. Water reclamation pumps some of the purified effluents to a special water distribution system for watering lawns. This is called a reclaimed or reused water system, and over 18,000 utility accounts utilize the reclaimed water system. Applied to the lawns of Titusville, the reclaimed water receives further polishing from the vegetation and soil systems, and then eventually combines with the rainwater, percolates through the soil, and ultimately recharges the superficial aquifer.
Electronic Services manages equipment at hundreds of locations separated by many miles. Our DEP licensed operators need to monitor and control all of this equipment. To do so, our Electronic Services Division designs, installs, and manages a vast array of control systems comprised of telemetry, Ethernet, wide-area networks, programmable logic controllers, variable frequency drives, control panels, and instrumentation. Maintenance includes over 500 control panels and telemetry communications transmitters and towers. We also program and install the software, database, and cybersecurity applications that keep our systems reliable and safe from intrusion. However, our biggest threat is lightning. When a thunderstorm rolls through Titusville, you can bet that a Public Works crew is fixing the damage. Due to the need for rapid results to make important public health decisions, Public Works maintains an analytical laboratory that is accredited through the National Environmental Laboratory Accreditation Program, licensed by the Florida Department of Health. The Department of Health license ensures strict quality assurance protocol and allows our laboratory results to be included in our permit monitoring manuals to all state and federal regulatory agencies. Laboratory Services staff specializes in microbiology, wet chemistry, organics, inorganics, and metals testing. Our specialized laboratory is structured only for in-house samples.
The Operations Branch, led by the Operations Director Sandy Reller, consists of 141 employees and eight divisions: administration, street maintenance, field operations, solid waste, recycling, facilities maintenance, fleet management, and stormwater management.
The Administration Division, led by our Operations Administrator, is responsible for a multitude of administrative duties, including answering calls and questions from citizens, receiving and paying bills, and obtaining quotes from vendors. The administrative assistants are at the forefront of our department and are usually the person citizens interact with on a day-to-day basis to help solve any issues that may arise. Our team of administrative assistants answers approximately 2,750 calls from citizens each month. The Administration Division generates over 8,000 work orders each year, including both scheduled maintenance and responses to citizen concerns and requests. The Training Coordinator provides one-on-one training with new and experienced employees across many of our divisions on equipment operation, training for commercial driver's licenses, how to inspect their vehicles prior to operating them, and more.
Street Maintenance is responsible for maintenance and repairs to all city-maintained paved and unpaid roads and streets. The total length of these city-maintained public streets is over 200 miles. Road maintenance is provided through the grading of city's dirt roads, repairing potholes within 72 hours of receiving complaints, and repairs to curbs and gutters. Maintenance also includes sidewalks, bike paths, street signs, road striping, median beautification, weed control, and maintenance of other right-of-ways within Titusville's jurisdiction. Last year, Street Maintenance completed over 4,200 feet of sidewalk repairs and completed 1,328 pothole repairs. In total, Street Maintenance completed over 1,100 work orders in fiscal year 2022. Street Maintenance employees have received certifications in temporary traffic control methods, proper street signage, and proper installation of payment markings. Field Operations is responsible for the operation and maintenance of the field components for the drinking water, wastewater, and reclaimed water systems. These field components include 363 miles of water main, 2,240 fire hydrants, 4,016 sewer manholes, 101 city-owned lift stations, and 293 miles of gravity sewer and force main pipes. Because quality is our primary focus, Field Operations' responsibilities also include field sampling, backflow prevention, and cross-connection control. Field Operations provides around-the-clock emergency service to our customers and have completed over 3,900 work orders in fiscal year 2022.
The Solid Waste and Recycling Divisions are responsible for residential weekly garbage and containerized yard waste pickup, every other week recycling pickup, and bulk pickup when the service is requested. Bulk pickup requests are required for large yard waste piles and large items such as furniture and appliances that cannot fit in the garbage carts. Solid Waste also provides commercial dumpster pickup for over 900 dumpsters throughout the city. Commercial customers can request to have their dumpsters picked up from one to six times a week depending on their needs. Last year, Solid Waste employees removed 24,714 tons of residential waste and 14,742 tons of commercial waste. Solid Waste provides maintenance and repairs to the garbage and recycling carts and dumpsters
crossing signals throughout Titusville. Facilities is also responsible for maintenance of the white light lights along US-1, which includes 270 streetlights and 650 fixtures. Facilities Maintenance completed over 900 work orders in fiscal year 2022. Fleet Management provides preventive maintenance and repairs to over 500 city-owned vehicles and equipment for all departments in the city of Titusville. Fleet Management staff hold multiple automotive service excellence and emergency vehicle technician certifications. Fleet employees also maintain the fuel service that supplies most city vehicles. Fleet Management completed over 3,200 repair work orders for a total repair cost of $1,484,027 in fiscal year 2022.
The Stormwater Division maintains and repairs all publicly-owned open drainage, closed drainage, and retention pond systems within the city of Titusville's jurisdiction. This infrastructure includes 120 miles of storm pipes, 30 miles of storm ditches, and 8,000 stormwater structures. Stormwater employees are responsible for repairing and maintaining public ditches, inlets, stormwater structures, and storm pipes. Stormwater employees follow a maintenance schedule for this infrastructure, such as ditch mowing and inlet cleaning schedules, and also respond to citizen concerns. Stormwater employees completed over 150 work orders in fiscal year 2022. Stormwater employees are trained and have received certification on stormwater operation and stormwater erosion and sediment control inspections. Employees are also certified in temporary traffic control methods. The Stormwater Division is responsible for cleaning the baffle boxes along the Indian River, along with implementing projects to reduce flooding issues throughout the city and to improve the quality of stormwater discharges into the Indian River Lagoon and St. John's River. In order to comply with the Indian River Lagoon Basin Management Action Plan and to help improve the water quality of the Indian River Lagoon, 21 water quality projects have already been completed with seven more currently in progress. The Public Works Department is now the largest department in the city. Our team of dedicated employees is working hard, both in the field and behind the scenes, to make sure the city's operations and utilities are up and running as smoothly and efficiently as possible. We hope this helped to break down all of the many responsibilities of the Public Works Department. And if you see one of those employees working out in the city, make sure to give them a thanks for all they do.
Wow. That was well done. First of all, great video. Secondly, again, I tried to write down a couple of not just crazy loud numbers, and it's like, there's just too many. But I will say, the thing that hits me is how diverse you are in the things that you do. From the sidewalks, and I forgot, but it was like 500 miles, no, but it's a bunch of sidewalks, water, streetlights, and then I saw engineering, and that was 112 projects that they had going. So you guys are just rocking. I do have one question. How do you like Kevin? What do you think the change of organization and the program has done?
I think it's made us a lot more nimble with responding to need. You know, our streets crews are supplementing staffing when needed. Now, when there's an issue on a street, the first responding crew can make decisions to open up the roads and things and don't necessarily need the complete train water repair guide to start the process. We're also implementing some more changes in the future to change our callouts, to make them more interactable. Too, right now, we hold callout crews for water sewer. We use after-hours line for our Public Works. The rest of Public Works, they'll be going to a more consolidated callout group that will start to make more decisions on repair side and response. So I think we're a better response group now as a whole for the city. And like I said, I used the concerns that Osprey had earlier this year. There was a stormwater crew clearing a ditch. There was field ops crews checking force mains. There were plant operators checking the plant all at the same time, supportive of lab services. So it's a lot of people now able to focus in on any issues that come up that need to be addressed.
Very, very good. Thank you. Counsel, I think that Vice Mayor.
Yes, good afternoon. I don't know if you know, I've never did a tour of your operations with you at this point. It makes me feel at home more than you could know, because if you, if anyone has spent the majority of life on ships, it is just a mini-city. And I understand, other than the concrete, but the flight deck, I can let that be, you know, a place that we have to put down the decks. But I know how difficult it is to run an operation like that, as if we would say in the military, Bravo Zulu. Job well done.
I like that. That works for me. Very seriously, just so much you guys do, and so well done and well presented. So with that, thank you guys very much. Appreciate you.
Onto item 4D, which is Mission Space Coast Presentation. Angela Neal, Director of Special Projects with the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast, will present an update to the community for the rebranding, I guess, or...
Thank you for getting the mic to share the, this branding initiative with you guys. It's actually the first time this has ever been done for Brevard County, and what we're looking to do is tell the story of Brevard County as a whole through one unified voice. And this is a collaboration between the Space Coast Office of Tourism, the Economic Development Commission, and of course stakeholders throughout the community. So it's pretty exciting. It's a big endeavor, because branding the entire county, which has a lot of diversity amongst the county, and it's a very long, narrow county as well, just to make sure that everybody's on board with it, is, that's the big endeavor part. So thank you guys for being part of it. Thank you Mayor Diesel for meeting with me. We've taken the effort to meet with all of the mayors and city managers and trying to get everybody involved and make sure you guys are understanding how to get involved, and hope that you guys will utilize this brand upon execution and that you know where you can get involved and have your voice heard if you're interested. So I'll show you a little bit. This slide right here, during our first phase, we met with internal Brevard County stakeholders through professional organizations. We met with the mayors and city managers as well at that time. And this kind of, putting all of it together, just kind of gives you a vision of what people see from the outside in. We have all these amazing resources here in Brevard County, but each individual component of it doesn't tell the full story of what we have to offer. And so what we're looking to do through this unified brand is to tell our story. And so if you think about a unified brand, think about I Love New York or Keep Boston Weird, those brands that you hear them and you know exactly where they are, what they stand for, what it means to live there. We want people to know that about us on Florida Space Coast. And so we hope that people 10 years from now are wearing this brand on their shirt, and we hope that you guys will be part of giving your feedback as we start to execute that brand as well. But what we'd like for, to happen, is for each of these brands to utilize the brand that we come up with side by side with theirs in hopes that it will have all boats rise together. And so everybody's going to benefit from it. There's really not, what we found from some of our research is that people outside of the area don't really know any one area that much more than the others. And so this is only going to help all of us. A little bit about the process. I mentioned that we spoke with a lot of stakeholders through those community conversations. That was the very first part, and we spoke with about 800 people through those. And then we brought in an outside consultant that was, he didn't have any skin in the game as far as what people said. And so that was really nice to have, for the people to be able to give him honest feedback. And so he did the focus groups and then also an external survey. And we did that internally and externally. And so that was kind of the Phase One and Phase Two. For our external focus groups in Phase Two, we went to Raleigh, South, Raleigh, North Carolina, and then we also went to Houston, Texas for those. And now we're on to Phase Three. We're actually visual, doing the visualization and design of the brand. And so what we're doing and opportunities for the community to get involved are we're hosting pop-up focus groups where we, when we have two pieces of the brand that we're developing, we'll get your feedback in real time on that. And so it's usually a quick turnaround with when I send out the information and when you can participate in it, simply because we have to continue moving and maintain that momentum so we can keep on track. But we are trying to give those opportunities out. So if you're interested and you want to be notified when we do those pop-up focus groups, I'm going to have my contact information on the last slide, and feel free to reach out to me. We did one just not, we did two different ones not too long ago, and we solidified our core values. And so what we do is we've had these pop-up focus groups, but in addition to that, we have a reporting board that is the checks and balances of all of the data that we've collected. And so we're really trying to stand back and not be hands-on with this and let the community decide what this brand is, because it's the community's brand and it's not our brand. I guess on that note, I should make sure it's very clear that this brand is not an EDC brand, it's not a tourism brand. It truly is a community brand, and it's for business attraction, talent attraction, and tourism. And so it's also not designed to replace Brevard County either. Sometimes people ask that question. So another way to get involved, this is going to launch in January of 2024, and so it's a long process. And something we've had that's kind of fun, that is a postcard contest. And so if you guys are out over the summer, you've taken some great pictures throughout Brevard County, you can submit those for a photo contest. We're going to open it back up August 1st through the end of August, and you could have your photo on a postcard. And then we go around and we distribute the postcard, or you can request the postcards. We buy them and just send them to you, so you can share them with friends and family. And it's pretty exciting. Whenever we did our external research and even our internal research, a lot of people find out about the area from word of mouth and friends and families still. So there's all the digital and technology that's happening, but a lot of it is who you know in the area. And so these actually have a tremendous value if they're used. We'll also share them on our social media and website if you have images too. Talked about the pop-up focus groups and the postcards, so please don't hesitate to reach out at any time. Our next thing that we're working on, we're coming up with the tagline messaging and imagery as well to go with the brand. And then the final piece of it will actually be the logo and the color palette. So that's kind of just to give you an idea of the process. So this is my contact information. And again, don't hesitate to reach out if I can help you be involved, or if you'd like to be involved in any way. This is, this is about you guys. It's about our community, and just want to make sure that we are attracting the right kinds of business and talent and tourists to the area that will help us maintain the quality of life that we have now and that we're really proud of. Thank you for the time today.
Well, very good. Thank you so very much. I'm blessed to have heard you several times and then speak with you. And I do like the, you know, the plan. I like the vision. I like labeling, you know, like you said, I love New York and those kind of things. You get it in people's mind. It needs to be that way. And I also like the fact that you stress and you're not trying to take anything away or anything that we already have branding-wise. So I just think you're here for all the right reasons, and I think you're also the right person. I appreciate that. Counsel, any guys want to add? I think you guys mostly have all heard this presentation at one time or another. So, well, thank you so very much for being here. I appreciate it. And you got to enjoy a pretty good meeting today.
This is honestly, we've been going to all the city councils, and it has been, I will probably go again, it's been a real honor. Got to see 60th anniversary of Cape Canaveral and the Medal of Honors today. This has been pretty...
Wow, this is kind of doing special things when you show up.
It's very nice. Great community. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. City Manager.
We're on to item 4E, which is the Community Resiliency Stewardship Program. A summary report will be presented on the Community Resiliency Stewardship Program grant that was awarded by the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Mr. Parrish is here to provide that presentation to you.
The council members, if you remember, some of you may remember, a few years ago, or actually in 2018, 2019, we did a resiliency vulnerability assessment and plan with a grant from DEP. Since that date, there have been new changes to the law and some new requirements. And in preparation for us submitting another request for a grant to do another vulnerability assessment and update what we did back several years ago, we decided to, last year, apply for a small grant from the Florida Coastal Management Program, about $30,000. This is money that came indirectly through, from NOVA, to do an education project. And so last year, we started with a questionnaire that went to about 150, we had, we received 159 responses from our staff. We did a two-part education program to kind of prepare everybody for the fact that we're going to be doing this vulnerability assessment probably next year, where we tried to do a questionnaire to the staff to see where they, what they understand about resiliency and sea level rise and climate change. And based on the responses that we received, we tailor-made a workshop. And that was in collaboration with the University of Florida IFAS program and with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. This workshop was held with several members of our staff, was well-attended and well-received. And this provided some information about what resiliency is and what the city can and can't do. So they did a lot of exercises during this workshop, and it was a really good educational opportunity for a lot of our staff members. And it also provided some information to our staff members to be able to give to the public and be able to answer questions related to resiliency. The other part of the project was to do a survey of the community. And so there was a very lengthy survey that was available on the website, distributed to the public. We received a pretty good response, more than 400 responses to the survey. And based on that, we were able to tailor our, the next step in this project, which was the activities that we held, where we went to certain events at a table. We had certain staff members there, providing information, asking questions, answering questions to the public. And then we also held an open house, which was attended by several staff members from our Community Development Department, Public Works especially, Fire Department, and other agencies as well from FDIP, IFAS, and Regional Planning Council. And this was held on an evening here in City Hall. It was well-attended there as well. And then we followed that up with a community training webinar that was led by our former sustainability planner, Rachel Muller, and Michelle Morrison with the Regional Planning Council, and Holly Abils with the University of Florida IFAS Extension Office. That webinar was tailor-made based on the responses received during the survey portion of this project, and with the interaction we received at the two events that we attended and with the open house. And that is available on our website. Again, this project was to prepare us for the next step. This is a closing. Basically, we have attached the third report and final report that we are going, we've submitted to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They are, we're just waiting on their response to say that this project is complete. And then in, later in September, we will submit our grant application for the next step, which is to do that vulnerability assessment. So that project, if we get that grant, will probably start next year and will go on for another 12 months. So we've got this topic going off in at least the next couple of years. So with that, I'll try and answer the questions you have.
Nice report and nice update, and you do a great job that way. Counsel, I see no lights, nobody. Everybody's saying we're happy. I see nothing. Thank you so much.
And the last agenda item tonight is 4F, which is the GIS presentation, which will be provided by GISF.
This is the bells and whistles one, so y'all better be good.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening.
Yeah, we just wanted to have a few minutes of your time to introduce ourselves. We've, Ashley and I have been here since late last year, and, and so we wanted to come in and talk a little bit about GIS and what we're doing for the city with the, with our GIS program. So this is Ashley Negrete. She's our GIS technician, and she's a graduate, graduate of UCF. She has her bachelor's degree in environmental studies, and while she was there, she took every GIS course she could get and was so good at it that they made her a teaching assistant, so she not only learned the program, but taught it as well. My name is Cindy Lieberman. I'm your GIS Analyst Lead, and I graduated from Southern New Hampshire, New Hampshire University with a bachelor's in geoscience. Before I came here, I was with Brevard County for 15 years. The last 12 and a half of those were managing the natural resources data for, GIS data for natural resources. A little bit about, oops, sorry, yep. It's my first time presenting. So a little bit about GIS. I think you guys probably know basically what it is, but it's a, it's a program that allows us to track data, analyze it, interpret it, visualize it through maps. It allows us to see trends and patterns in that data. We also communicate with the public through the online map portal that we have on our website. I like to say that we don't know where we're going unless we know where we are, and for both of those things, we need a map. So basically, we make smart maps, and those, we make maps, applications, and models, and those allow us to analyze data and answer questions. For instance, Kevin and Sandy were talking about all the infrastructure in the city, and so we manage that data for them in the GIS, all the, the pipes and infrastructure, stormwater, all of that. All the, the pipes and infrastructure, stormwater, all of that. We can answer questions like how many water mains are there or how many parcels are there in the city that are over a certain acreage? Here, you handle that. All right. Thank you.
So Cindy was just explaining, GIS has many different functionalities, which can be served throughout all of the departments of the city. So the main departments we service would be community development, which is the department that we are technically under, public works, and our fire and police departments. And we are going to go into the daily functions that we provide for the, all those departments. So starting with community development, we are in charge of making the community development maps as well as maintaining the data that they use, including the zoning and future land use data. So as council members, I'm sure you've seen many of these application for development maps, including small-scale amendment maps, conditional use permit maps, aerial maps, zoning maps and et cetera. And for the zoning and future land use data, like I said before, we do maintain numerous amounts of data, but we want to highlight the zoning and future land use data in particular because it's so essential for community development to function. So for example, if a rezoning goes through, Cindy and I are in charge to make the official change those layers so that reflects into our online maps. And then we're also in charge of address management. So if there needs to be a new address, it would go through us. And we're in charge of maintaining four separate databases, the, one of those being the city address database. So if you ever go onto one of our online maps and you see address points, we physically put those there and filled out all the data. We also coordinate with Brevard E911 to make sure that we're on the same page for the location of an address so that then in case there is an emergency, emergency services goes to the proper address. BSNA building, we make the accounts there and provide addresses so that building is able to issue permits. And for our BSA utilities, we also make the accounts and assign addresses there so that utilities are able to bill properly.
So what you see on the screen here is a little section of public works map with some data on it. This is, it shows some of our, the water lines, sewer lines, reuse, drainage inlets, streets and outfalls. So we make sure that we put all of this data into our GIS system. We have both public and private infrastructure in there. It's used by public works to know what's existing, what's in the ground. So if there is a proposed development, they can look at the map and see, is there a water line available near this new development? Or is there a sewer line or will there have to be a sewer line extension to serve that new development? It helps make, helps in decision-making for, for these new developments.
We also assist fire and police departments. So a lot what we do for them is editing their data as well as creating individual maps. And recently we helped fire and police with a project regarding the service area for fire engine stations. So essentially what we did there is we helped recreate their service areas so that they know which engine should go to what particular area. And then we helped police load that data onto their system. And then we also, like I mentioned, create individual station maps. So let's just say if Fire Station 12 wanted a map of just their run area, we make it for them right then and we get that out to them. We're also in charge of maintaining our online GIS maps, which we have a number of. And I would like to highlight a few of those. One of those being the Protecting the Indian River Lagoons Story Map. So this story map focuses on showcasing the stormwater structures that Titusville has implemented to help promote lagoon health. And this story map was also just recreated to become more informative to the public. So it breaks down those particular projects better. The zoning and future land use I wanted to highlight because that's so essential for our community development department with the zoning and future land use and as well as all of you. And then our applications for development under review map. It showcases the planning applications and also items like what the applications are about and then the meeting dates for them so that our public knows what's going on in the community. And then here's the rest of our maps. There's quite a few of them, all very informative to what's going on in Titusville. And I will mention that we did do a project on all these story maps where we created all of them due to them being in an old interface. And I will mention more of that on the next slide. So along with our daily tasks that we have gone over, we also do projects. One of those, as I just mentioned, was rebuilding those online story maps. A number of them were on the old interface and they needed to be updated so that when a member of the public goes to use them, we want to make sure it's a streamlined and nice experience.
This is an example of one of the other things that recently completed projects. It's vacant properties in the city. And these are city-owned vacant properties that this was analyzed, the property data was analyzed to find any of the properties that might be affected by the Live Local Act.
And then another recent project we just completed is updating our downtown directory. This directory was not in a GIS format before, so it had to be manually changed. But now that it is in a GIS format, it's much easier to update, take away locations, add locations, organize them. So it'll make it much easier for our planning department to update in the future. We also have some potential projects that we are looking to work on, one of those being a canopy analysis. So within the year, Titusville had an urban tree canopy assessment done by Planet Geo, which they provided a assessment of our tree canopy. And they've also provided with that some raw raster data. And with that raster data that they used, we would also like to take our own analysis with their raster data and incorporate it with some personal Titusville data so that we can have our own canopy analysis for priority planting.
And the other potential project that we have is we've just gotten some of the new LiDAR data. And LiDAR is short for light detection and ranging. And basically what that is, is they fly a plane over the surface of the earth and they shoot lasers at it and they get a million little points of data that shows us like this example here. It shows you the elevation or the topography of the earth. That can be used for, for stormwater management and other applications. It actually shows us like tree, we can get tree heights, tree canopies. And what you see in that picture there on the right is where the red areas are high and the blue areas are low. So it gives us a really detailed picture of what the earth looks like, what our city looks like. And finally, we're going to do a little project demonstration. This is the City of Titusville utility location map. And this is, this is recorded because we couldn't do it live. So I'm going to try to stay up with it. So forgive me if I get out of sync. Thank you. Just hit the button. Okay, so first, first I'm going to change it to a more basic background map so that you can see all of the, the lines and points. Zoom in a little bit and also up in the right hand, there's a layers list. So these are all the layers in that map. You can turn them on and off. Some of them are grayed out. If it's grayed out, you have to zoom in closer to be able to click it on. So we, hang on, I got ahead of myself. So we have a street layers and, well, street names. And then I'll turn on some, some of the water features. We have all of the fire hydrants, water lines, storm or sewer manholes, stormwater network structures. This one is actually all of our lift stations. It comes up as a little green square in there. It's hard to see on these monitors. We have sewer gravity mains. Everything sewer is in green, everything water is in blue. Each one of these, you can click on them and get a little bit of data from them. This is something that we continually work on, adding more data to these. So that eventually we hope to have, you know, what it is and, and what it's made out of and elevations on it and all sorts of data that we can add to it. We also have, again, little tiny green dot that you can't see, but we have all of our outfalls that, that outfall to the lagoon along the shoreline. And this is a stormwater network. So we can see where our stormwater flows. And we have the reclaimed lines as well. Those are purple. And finally, we have our IRL segments. That one you have to zoom out real far to see. But, and this is used for, this is the DEP segment so that we know when we apply for a DEP grant, which area of the lagoon that we're affecting. So that is our project demonstration and our presentation. And I appreciate you guys giving us some time to come and say hi and introduce ourselves and show you what we do.
Well, thank you so much for being here. It's obviously fascinating and probably well above my head to try to ask too many deep questions. But I would say that I've done enough things, been with Solid Waste and I see how they use it. I've been with Titusville Police, Titusville Fire, was in the 911 room. It's just amazing, all the things it can do and how much we use it. So thank you so very, and I've learned some more things that you do with it, with the sewer lines, et cetera. It's like, man, man.
We feel really lucky that we get to deal with so many different geographic features and, and we really get to know the city quite well.
Need an all-day seminar on that.
Yeah, it's crazy to think of how they did things, you know, 40 years ago to now. So I think you guys probably work in one of the coolest departments.
Yeah, we think so.
One of the things, so I am on this site quite often. And I think one of the things that our citizens, which I would hope they would utilize more, is the applications portion. And I was just curious about how that happened. So do you guys work with planning? Do they input certain information and then it's updated? What does that process look like?
So we do have a shared file that we, everyone's able to access. And as they update it, I check it officially. I update it once a week, but I usually check it every day because changes can happen all the time. So as they update it, I make the changes as soon as possible, basically.
Perfect. And then my second thing, I teach an urban and regional class, actually. And so one of the assignments I have them do is to go onto different cities' websites. And I was telling this to our city manager, to go find like an address and figure out the land use and zoning. And so when I am reviewing them, I get to see other cities that they're submitting and I am always very proud of ours. So good job and I appreciate you guys.
Yay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, yes. Very, 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 very interesting. And I understand how you get the topography information from going down. How far did you have to go back to start putting in the basic information of things that are underground?
So a lot of that was, fortunately, there was a larger staff a few years ago and they had a couple of technicians who are working on that. And I think they went back, Brad, do you know how far back the, the data went?
A lot of the data was created based on, we're talking about the utilities data?
Yes.
Well, Kevin could probably answer better for me, but I think there were a lot of atlas sheets that were used and given to a consultant that curated the base data, digital data that you just saw.
All right. Number Nelson.
I just want to say, I remember talking to you guys in the spring about the tree canopy and thank you for doing it.
Yeah, that was impressive. I mean, and you got the tree canopy. Like, how do you do that? That's amazing. I mean, there's so much out there. When you put it up there, I think most of us are like, how'd they do that? Like little magicians, how'd they do that?
It still amazes us.
Well, we thank you for being here. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for doing what you do. Appreciate y'all. Thank you very much. City manager, I believe we move to petitions or requests for the 5:30 meeting. If some of you came in late and thought we're in the 6:30 meeting, we're in the 5:30 meeting. So if you have something along that line, petitions or requests. Call one. Thank you. All right, Stan, let's go. Go.
Better than those. We already started.
Well, you stand there, let's go.
Yeah, well, my name is Stan Johnson. I'm here because I don't get answers from staff. The city manager has closed doors and I've got, it's a failure, failure to respond. So I come to you to get some questions and start to straighten out problems. So although you think I'm wasting your time, the thing is that you're wasting my time because the staff is wasting my time. I don't get, I don't get answers from them, so I come here. So in this case, I sent you an email today. It's about SNJ Oaks and it's about also, I had a survey. Well, I had, Mr. Robinson came with me on, on July, the 12th. And we, we looked at some, we looked at some things. And so I'm going to read from you what I wrote, sent you today on recommendations. There's four recommendations that I have regarding this SNJ Oaks. And number one is to terminate the city manager without, without a pension, 70,000, for his $70,000 fraud, violation of numerous laws, nonsense, gag orders, dishonesty, et cetera. That's number one. Number two is to hire a professional engineer to dispute my findings and exposure of, of what I'm talking about, like for example, the dishonesty and so forth. Because I, I, I tell you about him, the nonsense and dishonesty and violation of laws, and nothing's done. And you, you just get a professional engineer instead of just saying, Stan, you don't know what you're talking about. The thing, thing is, you can go to the board and say, hey, he's not telling the truth. And I could be disciplined, but the thing is, I'm telling the truth. Number three is to require correction to the survey plans of preliminary plan of SNJ Oaks. This goes back almost two years and it's still not done. And I'm recommending also the owner should sue the city for damages because what the city has done is violation of laws, incompetence, nonsense and negligence. So number, number seven on this, number seven is, has to do with, with, I'll read it to you. There's a south, at the southwest property corner, there's a wooden stake and I have this on here, there's a wooden stake down here, southwest property corner. And it's, 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 it shows that the, going from that stake, going 50 feet off, it shows that the right away for Elizabeth Avenue is, has, is a dispute, a boundary dispute. And it goes into the city, the sidewalk is within private property. So we have a boundary dispute that the City of Titusville should address.
Thank you.
And I would like another two minutes on that. I don't know if I can get it, but, or answer any questions, but you've got a boundary dispute that you're not responding to. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And about nine other properties.
Any other petitions or requests for the 5:30 meeting? Come on. You're making a move. I can see you're thinking about it.
I'm not sure if I'm up here at the right time.
Yeah, you know what? It doesn't matter. We're good.
Thank you. My name is Billy Joe Clayton. Mrs. Billy Joe Clayton, I live at 2898 Demerit Drive with my husband. We've been there about 20 years. I wanted to bring up the stormwater drainage system because the board, of course, has sent me the paperwork. I didn't realize, we're still paying on our loan. We took out a loan in 2010 because our stormwater drainage pipe at the entrance to our property by Harrison, we're right next, down from Wind Dixie. It was, it was damaged, need repaired. It's very expensive for us being in a condo. There's only 84 homeowners. We paid a huge assessment, if anybody understands those, and then we took out a loan, $125,000. We still owe on it. We're going to be paying on that till 2040. I know, shocking. I thought so too, but I'm not part of who took that loan out and everything. But our stormwater But our stormwater drainage system's a building that was built in 1974, copper pipes to all the houses, we've almost all had to renovate. Well, that leads right out to the old system, and we're concerned about access with the new developments on Royal Oak and the new developments in front of us with Apollo Gardens needing access to our stormwater drainage system. And at this point, we want to say voluntarily, we don't want to grant that because we're already paying this huge loan off. We just want you to take that into consideration. I'm sure the city must have records of what, I'm sure they paid some for that too, because it was right on the main road there of Harrison.
Yeah, that's, that's a well-brought-up point.
We, we used to flood a lot when Royal Oak was in, from the runoff from there, our whole street would flood. We'd get those walking fish and everything. So now, once the golf course is closed, which is sad, we don't get that kind of runoff as much, but we do see the manhole sinking and seeing, you know, ages, it's almost 50 years old for that building.
Okay, well, any questions or comments on that? Because I think it's a point I hadn't thought about.
I just wanted to make that point. I also wanted to bring up urban alleys. Have you ever heard of an urban alley? When you put two tall buildings on either side of small buildings, like you see in cities, cuts off the sun, cuts off your wind, cuts off the shade. Spanish Oaks is only two stories tall. The proposal for Apollo Garden and Fox Point is three stories. That's my front yard. My backyard, the proposal for Royal Oak is four stories. And I really like you to take that into consideration for the 84 tax-paying, voting homeowners that have lived there, many of their families for almost 50 years, when approving the height requirements that will put us into what we call a little urban alley.
Thank you.
Thank, we do appreciate your time. I've been watching many of these here and from home. They're, they're hard to sit through sometimes, so I do appreciate you. Can I give the mayor one saying, because I always like to hear him speak? Never mistake kindness for weakness. There's a lot of people watching from home. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on the 5:30 agenda thingy here? All right, City Manager, anyone to add? All right, with that, we are at 7 o'clock. We will look at 7:10 to do the 6:30 meeting, meeting adjourned. In the back room, I don't have.
Florida Crossroads explores our state through its people, places, and events, and is made possible in part by funding from the Florida Department of Education.